Calling this meeting to order. Let's do a call, a roll call. Councilmember Wade said he'd be a few minutes late, so we may see him at the end. Councilmember from Ward 2?
Present.
Councilmember from Ward 3?
Present.
Councilmember from Ward 4?
Present.
All right, it's Councilmember from Ward 5 online. And Councilmember from Ward 6 said she'd be a few minutes tardy as well. With me, that does give us qualm, so we'll go ahead and get started. We can state the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I can get a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Councilmember Dalaker. It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Watson?
Well, I had wanted to add the, or find some way to deal with the, with the air monitor question. I suppose I'd like to either add it to the agenda or we could simply agree to ask Mr. Galloway to dispose of the question in the next couple of days.
Mr. Galloway is presently at the NFPPA conference. I definitely don't feel comfortable adding anything to the agenda without communicating with the public. As you all know, they are very adamant about resident input. So it may be something that we need to either give to Mr. Galloway or tee up for our next agenda. We want to do that for our work session.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I would be... Oh. So, yeah, I would be happy to defer it, I think, and that would be the normal order of business. I think there's, there is a deadline to get the request into the Maryland Department of Environment that unfortunately falls before the work session. So we don't have to litigate the whole thing here. But if we don't want to put it on the agenda tonight, then perhaps we can just agree to ask Mr. Galloway to use his judgment as to whether to send a letter on behalf of the town.
Okay, if there's a deadline, that's probably best. So it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Was yours a motion, Councilmember Watson, to add it?
No, I was in, I was in, I was in discussion of the other motion.
Yeah, and I was, I didn't know if we needed to continue. Thank you. I just didn't know if we needed to continue discussion. I'd be willing to, when Mr. Galloway gets back, to just have him, we could puddle to have him do it. Are you okay with that? I mean...
It's council's decision.
I mean, it's hard for me to say because there was no context or anything with the letter, so I'm not really sure what it's asking or what the deadline is or anything. But, yeah, if it's, if it's something that we're comfortable with Mr. Galloway doing, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think, I think we have two options. We can either trust his judgment to investigate it. We can speak to him over the next 48 hours and, or we can put it on the agenda tonight, recognizing that, you know, we would have the information we have, which is not full, I think, to your point.
Okay, without having full information and without having notified the public, I think it's better for us to trust Mr. Galloway's judgment. That's what we pay him for. So with that, I don't hear a request to amend your motion. There's a motion on the table, and it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, yes.
Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it. And with that, I will look for another motion, which is to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the approval of minutes as well as the grant requests from the Chevrolet Community Market.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Councilmember Dalaker.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bryner. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, it is a true consent agenda. The ayes have it. With that, we will now have resident input. For resident input, we ask that you come forward, state your name, your ward, and please limit your comments to three minutes. If you are online, we ask that you raise your hand so that you can be acknowledged, then state your name and your ward, and limit your comment to three minutes. If you are in person, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. Sheila Salo, Ward 2. At this time, when environment is found among taboo words, it is more important than ever to protect the natural areas on which we depend for our health and well-being and which must remain after this era of destruction. Organizations are working to adapt or resist, sometimes both at once. Your Chevrolet Green Infrastructure Committee continues to act and to call attention to changes affecting the environment in Chevrolet and its environment, and its surroundings. National policy changes have led to cutbacks in local programs. The Prince George's County Rain Check Rebate Program provided rebates for installation of rain barrels, rain gardens, and permeable paving. From 2014 to the present, Chevrolet residents have installed 85 rain barrels and 6,338 square feet of permeable paving with the aid of that program. The program has now been suspended. The Clean Water Act fee we pay along with our property taxes, that remains. We will be drafting a report and recommending that the town support the retention of this program. The committee is keeping its eye on development plans affecting our environment. In Go Prince George's, the newest version of the master plan of transportation, we find reference to building a flyover linking Route 50 to Cabin Branch Drive. This interchange proposed in the early 1950s by those interested in the warehouses being built along Cabin Branch Drive was dropped after opposition by the town of Chevrolet and its residents in the late 1970s. That is why we have the Upland wooded area owned by the State Highway Administration and through which Woodworth Trail runs. The Green Infrastructure Committee's query to the county concerning the resurrection of this flyover has not yet been answered. And tonight, the committee supports a request for a federal reference monitor to add data to our air quality monitoring network. That FRM would be the first within the Beltway. Existing FRMs tend to measure air quality in rural areas rather than those such as ours, surrounded by pollutant-producing highways and industry. A last word. Be sure to vote May 5th. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Walsh. I live in Ward 1. Back in June of 2024, I filed a request under Section 3 of the Town Code for financial disclosure statements filed since 2021. Section 3 in PG, in the PG County Code requires that elected and non-elected officials and candidates file annual financial disclosure statements. The process of obtaining these documents was far more difficult than it should have been. It took repeated follow-ups, and promised timelines came and went without explanation. At times, my emails were simply ignored, and I had to show up in person to receive any acknowledgement. After eight months of pestering, I finally received these financial disclosure statements. According to the records I was given, and is later confirmed by the town clerk, the only financial disclosures on file were from the Ward election candidates in 2023. That means that even though town-elected and non-elected officials are legally required to annually file financial disclosure statements, none of them have done so since at least 2021, perhaps even longer. This is unacceptable. Yes, we are a small town. Yes, we have limited resources. Sometimes things fall through the cracks. But this noncompliance with Section 3 has now become pervasive, pervasive and systemic. This is particularly worrying during times such as these where there are transparency, ethical, and conflict of interest concerns on national and local levels. Mayor Casey, I have heard you state multiple times that you have been transparent since day one. I want to believe that, but the documents I received indicate that since at least 2021, you are the only official sitting up here who has not submitted a financial disclosure statement, not as a candidate in 2022 and not as serving as mayor. While other council members at least filed candidate disclosures, you did not. That's disappointing. So in light of all this, I ask that the council and town leadership and the Ethics Commission consider the following. First, create a more streamlined and responsive process for fulfilling public records requests. It should never take over eight months and multiple in-person visits to receive fewer than 10 documents. Second, enhance transparency and disclosures. The documents I received were overly redacted, with even public information, like addresses and employers, removed. These details are not just legally public. They're essential for verifying or identifying potential conflicts of interest and confirming residency within Ward boundaries. Third, and most importantly, I urge the town to commit to full, consistent, and annual compliance with Section 3 of the Town Code. I understand that annual financial disclosures can feel like a burden, but it is crucial for transparency to be a top priority of this town. The positions you all hold are ones that you have gained from, earned from gaining the trust of your constituents. So we ask that you do everything you can to maintain that trust. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Thompson from Ward 6. I spoke previously at a town council meeting about the lack of transparency from the Chevrolet Town Council regarding a finding by the Prince George's County Ethics Board of an appearance of conflict of interest by Ward 6 Councilmember Frye, who is also vice mayor. They found the appearance of conflict of interest because of Ms. Frye's role as a chief of staff for Prince George's County Councilmember Jolene Ivy and concurrently her position on the Chevrolet Town Council. The county ethics board ordered her to cease one or more of her employments to avoid the appearance, to avoid the appearance of impropriety. This was not disclosed to Chevrolet residents, which I believe is a serious failing. I'm here again tonight because I expected some sort of acknowledgement of the matter that has not, that has not happened. This disappoints me because, as a retired high school principal, I, I did not ignore complaints from parents. I addressed them, their concerns, even though I knew the parents might not like the response. I expect the same of the town council. Further, as I have become more outspoken about this issue, I have been made aware of other related issues. It appears that while her ethics violation appeal was pending, she and her council took steps to avoid... To, took, I'm sorry, took steps to avoid and to shield Mrs. Frye from certain public votes or from having no public, or not having to publicly recuse herself. This again brings up the matter of transparency. Councilmember Frye appealed the finding that she should resign one of her positions along with several strategic legal continuances to delay action until after the Chevrolet elections. As a Ward 6 voter, I find this unacceptable. With no response to my concern when I, when I spoke previously on March 13th, I filed a complaint, a formal complaint, with the town Ethics Commission. The Chevrolet Ethics Commission acknowledged my, their receipt of my complaint, which I appreciated. It appears that it will be reviewed in a closed session, but I hope, I hope that the results of the commission's decision will be made public. My main complaint has been the lack of transparency about the matter and also the lack of representation of Ward 6 constituents as Member Frye recused herself on selected issues. Now I feel it goes deeper than that. I truly hope that the town council will rectify this systemic problem as soon as possible.
Julie Mosley, Ward 2. I'm here tonight about a lack of transparency, and in the words of John Lewis, caused some good trouble. My questions I've brought before this council before. When did the mayor and council vote to file suit or decide to file suit against Bladensburg's annexation of Hospital Hill? I have filed an MPI request with the town, but this public information has not been provided to me or answered publicly. When did this happen? Was this at the December 3rd closed meeting? I support annexation and applaud the mayor and council's decision to file suit, but these questions need to be answered. The mayor and council did not vote to pursue legal action at the open work session on December 5th, but immediately after that meeting, published a letter announcing the town was taking legal action. The vice mayor did not sign the December 5th letter announcing the suit. All other council members did. The vice mayor was in attendance at the closed December 3rd meeting. Why did the vice mayor not sign the letter? Others have asked this question. There has been no response. Regarding lack of transparency and related ethical issues, I'd like to talk about the management of the town's May election. I requested a list of voters who are registered to vote in the May election, those who can vote by virtue of their county registration, as well as those who registered only in the town. For years, for the 50 years I've been in Chevrolet, these lists have always been readily available by request at the town hall. Other residents requested the voter list more than a month ago. I submitted my request to the town and was told I would have to get it from the Chevrolet Board of Elections. I stated that my request to the boards had gone unanswered. Mr. Galloway and Ms. Richards tried to assist. Thank you. I appreciate that. Several days later, I received a list with 82 names, 82 voters. This list did not appear to have the newly registered 16- and 17-year-olds who are not registered with the county, only in the town, and they should be on the list. In fairness, just before the meeting tonight, I received an updated list from Giselle. And again, thank you. I asked what this list was. It's 82 names. Mr. Galloway replied that this was the list that the election board supplied, and he would forward my questions to the board. If the town cannot or will not provide the current list of all eligible Chevrolet voters to the citizens of the town, it is failing to deliver on a fundamental right of democracy, transparency, and fair and open elections. This isn't open government. I have submitted multiple, I have proof of my submittals, multiple online requests to the election board. No answer. In fact, there have been no response to any requests for voter lists, questions, or decisions by this board. It is, in my opinion, a mess. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Brian Barnett Woods. I'm a Ward 2 resident. First, I want to voice my concurrence with comments of my neighbors. I've already submitted my personal comments to the state to request an FRM, and I recommend everyone to do so. I also concur with comments about transparency and accountability. These are cornerstones of the social contract between officials and the community, and I thank my fellow residents for raising these issues. A second, many of my neighbors have raised concerns about the Hospital Hill development. I was most surprised to see that the Planning Board website didn't include a traffic impact study for the development, especially because residents have shared so many concerns related to new traffic in Chevrolet. Traffic adequacy is a required finding for both certificates of adequacy and the preliminary plan of subdivision for development in this county. Their plans show connections into Chevrolet. And while I suspect that the statement may find those existing intersections as adequate, we need to more importantly ask, how is this development measuring new traffic that will be going onto the BW Parkway? What traffic assumptions are being made? How many new trips in vehicles will be on Chevrolet streets? How will this development add traffic calming improvements to mitigate these impacts? This is especially important if this development wants to connect into Chevrolet streets. Also, if this first phase of development includes 72 townhomes right up against Wards 1 and 2, how are we preparing for any parking spillover effects? Lastly, I wanted to briefly discuss the budget. I strongly urge the town to clearly identify how our values are reflected in it. I'm glad that the mayor and council are not raising taxes this year. We need to strive and use our existing resources to provide services we both as a community expect and deserve. I also want to strongly urge the mayor and council to look more at just whether we can balance the budget or not. But let's figure out how we can achieve true fiscal resilience. This is especially true as you examine in detail the Public Works budget next week. For Chevrolet, questions we should be asking are, what is the ratio of financial assets to total liabilities? What is our net debt in interest to total revenues? What is the net value of our infrastructure assets compared to their costs? For investments we make as a town, how is it contributing to our community wealth? And how are we keeping that wealth in the community? These questions should help us guide to a much more sustainable, resilient, and culturally responsible Chevrolet. And I seek and hope that you move forward with that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Joel Lang, Ward 6. I live on Forest Road. A common theme in the resident input tonight seems to be lack of responsiveness. And I rise to suggest that a citizen input response be part of a meeting agenda at every meeting so that the people who are presenting their issues are not met with just silence and blank faces. I'm not suggesting a debate. I'm just suggesting a response so that the response could be, yes, we'll refer that issue to code enforcement, or yes, we'll refer that issue to the police department, or we'll refer it to Public Works, or something just as simple as, as your councilperson, I will get in touch with you, and we'll talk about that some more. But just to have a response so that the citizens feel heard when they get up and, and raise the issues of their response. I think that's not difficult to do. It's not a commitment of, of resolution, but it is a commitment to seek resolution. And, and I think the citizens are, are due that service from the council. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Leila Riazzi, Ward 1. My apologies, I'm late coming in, and I don't know the decision that's been made about signing on to support the placement of an FRM. So what I'm coming here today is both as a Green Infrastructure Committee meeting and as a member of the Environmental Justice Action Team to ask for your support and your adoption and submission to the Maryland Department of the Environment of a letter in support. The Chevrolet Green Infrastructure Plan, adopted by the town of Chevrolet in 2011, recommends measures to protect and improve air quality. In 2019, the town of Chevrolet entered into an agreement with the University of Maryland Community Engagement, Environmental Justice, and Health Laboratory, Maryland Institute for Applied Environmental Health Siege, to measure air quality by placing monitors and sites around the town. This air quality monitoring network continues to operate. I'm very happy to share that all of the town has been consistently updated on the workings of the air quality monitoring system and on the workings of EJAT throughout this time, and that Tad Aburn, who has been a navigator for our Environmental Justice Action Team, also, the mayor and council benefited from a presentation that Tad Aburn did about this. So I really appreciate how connected you've been with this work. An FRM would help bring the air quality monitoring that we need to this area. Right now, the monitors are located in Beltsville and Upper Marlboro. They are not giving an accurate picture of the pollution aspects in our area, especially considering the interchange of the both stationary sources and mobile sources in our area. In fact, it's important that you back this because it will be the very first monitor inside the Beltway in the state of Maryland. And we need a look at what's happening here. The levels that we are seeing on the, on the sensors that we are working with do raise concern. And the way that we get this recorded is to formally ask that MDE support the placement of an FRM in our community. Thank you so much. Really hope for and appreciate your support with this letter.
Anyone online? No. All right, is there anyone else in person? Okay. With that, we will now have the committee reports. Anyone from Red Council or the councilmember liaison?
Again, apologize for being late. I was at a community event during the day, earlier today. Thank you for the input. The Red Council Easter Egg Hunt will be this Saturday here at Town Hall from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. Again, that is this Saturday, the Easter Egg Hunt at Town Hall. Great event. My kids have participated in it several years. Unfortunately, I will not be there. My, my oldest has a taekwondo tournament, so we are going to miss that. But please come out and support. Several activities for the students, the kids, as well as family members to come out. Please tell your neighbors regarding that. Again, 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. this Saturday.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Councilmember Wade, can I ask a quick question? What happens when it rains?
They move it inside.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember Watson or someone from the Chevrolet Day Committee?
Thank you. Is Casey or Nick online? No, okay. Yeah, Chevrolet Day 2025 is going to be on Saturday, October 4th. So it's moved into October this year. So please make a note of that. It's the first Saturday in October. This is, I'm going to try to do some quick math. The 89th anniversary, so we will not have a, a, no, excuse me. 94th. 94th anniversary. So we will have a parade next year in 2026, which will be the 95th anniversary. But because this is only the 94, we will not have a parade, so we will have the all-day Saturday event that you're used to, the beer tent, the live music, the games on the midway, et cetera, et cetera. We always need more volunteers. We meet on the last Wednesday of every month, so you can either get in touch with me or visit the website. I do have it on good authority that we are getting the website updated for 2025, including sponsorships. So thank you, Councilmember Bryner and a few others who have been pushing us to get right on that issue. And again, the event is Saturday, October 4th. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Watson. Anyone online from Board of Elections? Oh, I skipped ahead. Someone from Planning Board or Councilmember Bryner?
Okay, I'm getting feedback that we should be farther away from the mics. When I do that, can you still hear me in the room? Yes?
I can hear you better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Planning Board, we had a meeting last week with the Hospital Hill developers, and they went through their plans in a little more of the specific detail that I don't understand, but that our Planning Board members do. So it was a really great meeting. And so the Planning Board is teed up now to when we get the actual preliminary plan of subdivision. They are ready to review it and provide feedback to the town so that within 30 days of us receiving it, we will be able to provide formal... within 30 days of us receiving it, we will be able to provide formal comment. We are currently without a chair. We have an interim chair. And thank you, Joyce Sepas, because she has been, she was the chair for a long time. She's already done her duty and she is stepping in right now. But again, if anyone is at all interested in this topic and would like to join the Planning Board, we would love to have you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Bryner. Anyone online from Board of Elections or in person? Oh, I see you.
Good evening. Robin Kaye on behalf of the Board of Election Supervisors. Just wanted to update you on our recent ongoings. At our last meeting, we certified the candidates for the upcoming election. And we have since then received two applications for certified write-in candidates, which we'll be evaluating at our next meeting. We have received an astonishing number of mail-in ballot requests this year, which is amazing. So far, we've gotten 147 requests, which is well more than what we did all of last year or all of last election. And we have processed 119 of them so far. The ballots have started to be mailed out this week. So if you requested a mail-in ballot, you should be looking for those pretty soon. We had approved providing postage on the return envelopes so to ease the burden of getting their ballots back to us. So when you receive the mail-in ballots, they'll have postage on them. Or we have a ballot box that is posted right outside of Town Hall. You can come up and bring them and drop them in the ballot box that is open for business. Anyone who still wants to request a mail-in ballot can do so until April 28th. You can either fill out the online form on the town's website. You can download the paper form and fill it out and bring it in or mail it into Town Hall. There's also a form in the April newsletter. So multitude of ways you can come into Town Hall without a form and they'll have them, they can provide them to you. So keep sending in those mail-in ballot requests. We love the engagement. What else? Oh, yes, voter registration. So we have had some voter registration events recently and registered some new voters in town. Anyone in town who is already registered to vote in Maryland may vote in the election. There's nothing more you need to do. If you're not registered in Maryland, you can choose to register to vote with the Town of Chevrolet. And you can do so on any business day here at Town Hall. You can do it on Election Day. Or we have two upcoming voter registration events, both being held on April 26th here at Town Hall. That's a Saturday. 8:00 to 12:00 p.m., 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. is the community cleanup event here at Town Hall. And we will have a table set up to help register people to vote or answer questions about the election in general. And also, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. on the 26th same day, there's the Candidate Meet and Greet Forum here at Town Hall. We have a little bit of a difference in our setup for voting this year because of budget constraints and a huge spike in price of what we did last time. We've changed things up a little bit. We're going to have a couple of electronic voting machines that people can use to vote in addition to paper ballots. So people will have a choice. We will not have a scanning machine for those paper ballots, so we will have to hand count them. And given the amazing response we've had to our mail-in ballots this year, the counting may take some time. So prepare yourself in advance for going back to hand counting instead of having that glorious scanner machine. But we will get the job done. You just have to have a little patience with us that night. We are seeking volunteers to help work the election in four-hour shifts. Our volunteers have been great in past elections, helping us move voters through the process. If you are interested in being a volunteer, please reach out to us. You can email us at boe@cheverly-md.gov and let us know you want to volunteer. We are especially seeking Spanish speakers, which are always handy for us to have on Election Day. Lastly, I would like to apologize for a mistake I made at the last public meeting that we had. At the conclusion of our meeting, it was, we realized we hadn't answered a question for the town clerk, and it was just a trivial piece of information. It was taking us a while to find it. I concluded the meeting but told people they could stay on and watch the remainder of the meeting while we sussed out this one bit of information. And we found it and ended the meeting. But it was pointed out to me that that was not the right thing to do. We should just not have adjourned the meeting before finding that bit of information. So I wanted to apologize. It has been pointed out to me. It was pointed out to me immediately, and it has been pointed out to me many times since. So, mea culpa. I apologize. We are doing our best to abide by the Open Meetings Act. And, you know, I'm glad people have told me I made a mistake. It won't be happening again. Our next public meeting will be next Tuesday, April 15th, at 7:00 p.m. And then our last public meeting before the election will be Friday, May 2nd, at 5:30 p.m. At each of these, if there's any, anyone who's applying to be a certified write-in candidate, the deadline for that is Friday, May 2nd. And so we will be evaluating any applications we receive at each of those meetings. Any questions?
Council, any questions? Oh, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ethics Commission?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens of Chevrolet. I'm Thomas Rule. I'm the interim chair of the Chevrolet Ethics Commission. Want you to know that we had a meeting on the 7th of April, three nights ago. Our main order of business was to discuss our internal governance documents, which are currently in progress. We're resuming progress on that. We hope to have a vote on that next month and get that into the books. Just a fun fact on that, that document has not been updated since February of 1991. I was a senior in high school then, so it's been a few years. So we're going to get that up to modern standards and drive on and do great things. The other thing we did was we received the financial disclosure forms for all candidates in this year's election. We have received all the ones that needed to be received, and we have reviewed them. There are a couple that we need to get a little bit of clarity on. Other than that, they have been received. And on that note, to Mr. Walsh and Mr. Thompson, we are receiving financial disclosure forms, starting with last year as we convened a new commission. That was one of our primary responsibilities that we knew we needed to tackle immediately. I have discussed that with the State Ethics Commission. I've discussed that with the mayor and the council various times. And we are working diligently to make sure that we are complying with the Open Records Acts and also the directives of the State Ethics Commission. And I want everybody to know that we are working toward that. I understand your frustration with the records release issue and the lack of records from certain years in the somewhat recent past. I am working with the front office, the Town Hall, to see what we can do to rectify that. But I do want to reassure everybody that financial disclosures, we are taking those, we are reviewing those, making corrections, or I should say, getting corrections as needed, and entering those into the record. We're required to do so, and previous iterations of the commission have not done a great job of that. So we're trying to fix that. Mr. Thompson, as you mentioned, that we acknowledged receiving something from me the other day, I want you to know that the Ethics Commission takes that very seriously. We're going to convene as soon as possible to look at that, and we will get back to you. It's on us to act quickly and decisively and take care of business as we need to do.
I appreciate you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Glad to do it. Hopefully, we're going to convene on or about the 21st of April. That has not yet been set in stone, but we will announce that that will most likely be an open-to-close meeting. And then if we need to get other people in to, you know, provide evidence, testify, that kind of thing, then we'll go from there. And that's just the standard procedure. Pending any questions from the council, that is all I have.
All right, council? Do we have any council members online?
Thank you.
No? Okay, thank you. All right. I will ask for your indulgence. We have a swearing in. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Chevrolet residents. It's certainly an honor to be here standing before you again as we continue to expand the knowledge, the talent, the experience of our Chevrolet Police Department. We'll be swearing in this evening Lieutenant William Gleason. The mayor and council approved a restructuring of the police department, important restructuring of the police department because obviously the leadership of the police department, as in any organization, is critical as it relates to the experience and the knowledge, the skill sets that those placed with the responsibility of leading departments, whether it's police department, fire department, health department, or in a classroom teaching, to have that experience that's necessary in order to make sure that we're delivering the best possible service to the community. Lieutenant Gleason comes to us. He just retired about two weeks ago from Prince George County Police Department where he served for 36 years, distinguished career. Equally important, he is a nationally renowned expert in the field of law enforcement training. He has testified both here in Prince George County on behalf of the state's attorney's office as well as the county attorney's office. But he's also recognized as an expert witness at both the state and the federal level. So he's currently on retainer, not conflicting with his job here in Chevrolet, but on a retainer as a consultant with the local government insurance trust, which ensures our municipality and many of the municipalities and counties throughout the state because of his level of experience. So we're certainly fortunate to have him. I've known Bill for his entire career. I had the honor, distinguished honor, to be his field training officer back in the late 80s. So anything that, anything that, if there's a responsibility, it falls on my shoulders dating back 36 years. But Mayor, would you please join me up here in welcoming Lieutenant Gleason and doing the honor of swearing him in?
Please raise your right hand. You got time to run.
Yep. I'm good. Thank you.
Aye?
Aye.
Please state your name for the record.
William Gleason.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
I will be faithful?
I will be faithful.
And bear allegiance?
And bear allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
I will?
I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently?
Diligently.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of police lieutenant?
Of police lieutenant.
For the Town of Chevrolet, Prince George County, Maryland.
For the Town of Chevrolet, Prince George County, Maryland.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
According to the Constitution and laws?
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state and the charter of the Town of Chevrolet.
Of this state and the charter of the Town of Chevrolet.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. You're safe.
Good evening, thank.
What is it, 10?
10. Thank you. Sounds a little good. Oh, okay. And we're going to take some photos? I'll get one of them real quick. Yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, everybody now. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Yay! All right. Thank you and welcome again. Thank you so much, Lieutenant Gleason. Okay. We will now read the Arbor Day proclamation. And Council, I will pass it down for you all to sign. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first proposed by J. Sterling Morton to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture in 1872 and was observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas the urban forests of Chevrolet is part of the watershed area of Beaver Dam Creek and ultimately the Chesapeake Bay. And whereas the General Assembly of the State of Maryland has declared that urban forests and trees are an important and necessary part of the community environment and that the retention, enhancement, and management of these forests and trees by local governments is the best interest of the citizens of the state of Maryland. Now therefore be proclaimed by mayor and council of the Town of Chevrolet that April 26th, 2025 will be celebrated as Arbor Day in the Town of Chevrolet. And we urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this future generation. All right. Pass that to you there. Okay. Am I supposed to have an update on the water tower? Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just briefly, Mr. Galloway and Attorney Pounds are working with WSSC on seeking solutions as well as funding possibilities. So there'll be more to report at the next council meeting, but they're working, it's work in progress.
Okay, chief, I'll just stick with you because after that is the town administrator's report.
Ma'am, I can't hear you.
I said I'll just stick with you because after that is the town administrator's report.
Okay. All right. Not doing the Crest Avenue updates?
Oh, Mr. Breaman? Are you online?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council. I do have an update on Crest Avenue. Mr. Good, our traffic engineer, is also with us here tonight. So the request was, as I understood from the public hearing, was to consider relocating the uphill or the approximate 2806 recommended speed hump to the 2808 area. Yesterday, we went out and painted some lines, which always gets people's attention. And we received some additional feedback about moving it from 2808 down to 2810. There's some odd numbers that are on the other side of the street. They don't go in sequential, well, they go in sequential order, but they don't match up. So I was just going to stick with the even numbers. I've discussed with Mr. Good about this, and I'd just like to give him an opportunity to comment on that request. Mr. Good?
Yep. Thank you, Steve. Yeah, so we, Steve and, Steve and I and a couple of the other DPW employees, we went out yesterday and we looked at the, where currently we initially wanted it to be at 2806, which was like that Steve mentioned, a little bit closer to the crest of the hill. The other one is down further, just past the curve. And those are two locations that we talked about at our walk, I think, back in November. And it seemed like we got compliance from the residents along the street there. And then we went out yesterday to mark the 2808 location, which wasn't too much big of a difference. I mean, it was probably an additional, I'd say 20, maybe 20 feet down the road, past the crest. Um... to move it to try to avoid, like, placing it over top of a manhole or some kind of valve box. So, in that general area, we believe we can accommodate the request, you know, directly in front of or very close to the 2810.
Okay, Mr. Berman, just a quick question. The residents that brought up changing the site, were they notified of the 2810?
Not at this point. I had replied back that we were going to, I was gonna share this information with Mr. Good. She wished me to, thank you, and wished me a wonderful day, and we can certainly, after this meeting, reply back to her, letting her know that the 2810 is the location that we are, that we are focused on, and where we plan to implement. Would that suffice? Did I answer your question adequately?
It does. Councilmember Watson, if you can make sure, there are notify, that'd be great. And thank you again for bringing that forward to the resident, bringing that to our attention. It sounds like it was actually at least a good move, so. All right, anything else, Mr. Berman?
And if I may, I just, so we have one that's going in at about the 2811, 2818 location, or let's go with the 2818 location, which is just, it's the downhill, just past the curve, and the other one will be, will be looking to install at the 2810 location, both on Crest Ave. Just for the record, and allow the clerk to nail those down more accurately.
All right, I'm sure the folks on Crest will appreciate it. Thank you so much, Mr. Berman.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Good.
Thank you.
All right, next meeting, I will wear my glasses. Chief?
Yes, ma'am. The Town Administrator's report, Mr. Galloway has submitted his report for Mayor and Council's review. I'll hit a couple of the highlights. One, Mr. Galloway asked that we remind everyone, with regards to code compliance issues, please continue to use the See, Click, Fix application. It's important for our ability to track and ensure that there are code compliance resolutions to address the concerns. There's information in here about the Mount Hope Commission, the staff participated recently in the What's Your Story offered by Ms. Dempsey, including all those that are at the table. We found an extremely interesting dynamic and process, and Ms. Dempsey's going to be following up with the Mayor and Council for future discussions to gauge your desire to participate. We have a new deputy town administrator who'll be sworn in at the next town meeting. This individual's been, went through a, an intensive vetting process, and we are confident that the new deputy town administrator's gonna be a great addition to the town staff and help continue to move the town in a forward direction. As it relates to cell phone coverage, those of you that use T-Mobile, there's been some enhancements made to the service to provide for additional area coverage, that's, so that's a positive. As it relates to Verizon and AT&amp;T, that's still work in progress. Regarding the Bladensburg annexation, the town of Bladensburg issued some revised documentation, so Mr. Galloway will be asking for a closed meeting for the Mayor and Council next week so that Attorney Pounds can update Mayor and Council on those moves. And that's the highlights of the report. If there's no questions, I would conclude the Town Administrator's report.
Mayor and Council? Is Mr. Deloach on?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Deloach, if I could just ask you about number four, can we figure out a way to do some pushback? I don't think it's acceptable for providers to just suggest that we buy extenders when we have customers that are paying for service and not receiving it. We've had this ongoing issue for a while, and so, I don't know what that looks like, but if we can kind of...
Mayor, you're fading in and out, I'm sorry.
Okay, I, that's further away, all right. I apologize, I am suffering from allergies, as most of you all have probably experienced grape pollen for this year. I'm sorry, I apologize if I sound like a frog. Can you hear me, Mr. Deloach?
Yeah, it's really choppy.
Is that any better?
It's a little bit better, yeah.
They say the further away it goes, the better. Is that better?
That's much better.
Okay, maybe that's actually true. There you go. So, yes, sir, I was asking that we take a look at number four, which is cell phone coverage.
Mm-mm.
You know, I have fancy ideas about us possibly suing utility companies, as well as cell phone companies. We've been asking for better coverage for quite some time, and to just say to purchase extenders is not an appropriate response. So, if there's a way we can draft something to each one of these contacts, possibly get in touch with their government relations person, I would like a better answer than just make do with what you have.
Okay, I will agree with Mr. Galloway on that.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that is our Town Administrator's report. Chief, it's still with you for the police report. All right, I'm up. First and foremost, again, we're gonna thank Lieutenant Gleason for joining the ranks of the CPD, just as the chief was his FTO. He was my mentor and partner on and off through my 27-year career with the County Police Department, and we could not have been lucky enough to find someone better than him for this agency. So, I'm very fortunate that he accepted this job. CPD has begun, we've begun cycling officers through 2025 mandated MPCTC required yearly in-service training, as well as firearms training. We've, they've also notified all agencies in the state of Maryland of their pending audits of background investigations and field training programs. We are just underway with our own self-review to ensure that we are 100% in compliance with the commission. Myself, Sergeant Byler, Corporal Soller, we're all registered to attend the FBI Law Enforcement Executive Development Seminar, Leeds, May 5th through May 9th. Executive Command Staff and Mr. Galloway are registered to attend MML, MMPLEA Annual Training Program, April 22nd through 25th. Patrol and traffic safety initiatives. CPD, we've identified an increase in crimes related to and surrounding Chevrolet Station Apartment in the last six weeks or so, an uptick in anywhere from cars in our area and the apartments being stolen. And having said that, being stolen and taken less than a block away, rummaged through and left. On top of it, vehicles tampering, tampered with, or items stolen from those cars. We are working with Prince George County Police and now have several arrest warrants and operations pending up in the apartments. And as a result, today, we had a meeting with management up at the apartment complex, Chevrolet Station, to discuss better ways we can communicate and work towards curving these problems, utilizing their new security staffing and the upcoming cameras that they say that they are going to be installing up there. So, we're still working through a lot of hurdles with the apartment complex, but I think we're in a better direction towards resolving some of the issues and the crime in the area. So, having said that, see, we've conducted numerous ward walks and a community meet and greet at the Chevrolet Station Apartments last Friday that was well-received, with numerous residents there intermingling with our police officers, just trying to build a better bridge between the community up there and our agency. A public hearing for stop sign monitoring systems has been scheduled for April 17th, 1,800 hours to 1,900 hours. Installation upgrades of Axon in-car camera, body worn camera, and signal sidearms are complete, and we'll be reaching out to Mayor and Council to set up a demonstration so that you can see how this equipment is utilized and how it protects our community and our officers, safeguards everyone. So, we'd like to, we'll probably be sending something out, a calendar invite in the next week or two, just to see if everyone is available for that. Again, we conducted the community engagement event up at Chevrolet Station. It was very successful. We hope to do many more in the very near future and as the weather warms. And finally, the CPD has started planning Public Safety Day, which is May 30th this year, 2025. We're putting together a flyer and we'll be submitting it in the monthly newsletter, as well on the website. And that's it for us. Councilmember Bryner?
With regard to pedestrian safety, I just heard from two different residents this week about concerns while crossing Chevrolet Ave. In particular, there was a resident crossing Chevrolet Ave at Lombard. A car slowed down or stopped to let them cross, and then the car behind them zoomed around and came very close to striking her. So, I just wanted to mention that, that it seems like there's a lot of that lately, and if we could be keeping an eye out for that.
If I can?
Yeah.
The Chevrolet 10 squad that was here just a few minutes ago, in the last three days, has conducted 75 traffic stops between 202 Chevrolet Avenue and Columbia Park. Same issues on Columbia Park, as we've seen in the past, and multiple different infractions on Chevrolet Avenue up at the 202 corridor. We're gonna continue those efforts, as well as, we've seen an uptick in parking complaints and parking violations, particularly on Sunday, as it pertains to the church. We've had officers out there in the morning prior to church to try to prevent folks from parking the wrong way on the street, blocking the intersections and as such. That seemed to work last Sunday, so we're gonna go ahead and try that again this Sunday. No, didn't work too well. Go ahead. Councilmember Bryner?
It might have worked well for the morning mass, but there are different masses throughout the day.
Didn't know that.
And then also with, I think, Easter coming up. So, around 2:00 PM, when we drove by, they were all driving, all up along 63rd.
Okay.
So, like, blocking, you couldn't see visibility to make a left, or even to make a right. And then all the way down 63rd, and then also Jason. So, I think it's just probably because it's a more well-attended mass, or like, there's more people, especially with the holiday coming up and everything. So, I don't know if we could do a, reach out to the church and ask them. I feel like they should probably have some sort of traffic, people out there to assist with that, just because they do have several different times. And I don't know if some of them are more busy than the other, also Saturdays, too.
Yeah, okay, and since it's that widespread, we'll go ahead and reach out to the church and see if, one, that they can let their congregation know that they need to abide by all the parking laws in our community and not block the intersections. We'll also, not necessarily do enforcement, but just more preventative efforts up there, and see our cars, and just advise people that they can't park in that manner in those locations. We'll take care of that.
Councilmember Bryner, as it relates to the pedestrian traffic, that's not lost on us either, the, as the weather, as the weather warms, more folks are out walking. And so, that enforcement effort that the deputy chief spoke about, if you were one, if you were not one of the 75 that were stopped in the last two and a half days, you're lucky, but if you, but that doesn't mean that you're immune. So, we're making concerted effort, particularly as it relates to pedestrian safety. So, thank you.
Councilmember Deloach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I ask my question, Chief, would you mind backing away from the mic and repeating what you just said?
So, as it relates to the pedestrian safety, we're, we know that as the weather warms, there's more folks that are coming out. So, we're making concerted effort on the traffic enforcement in the residential areas within the town. So, as the deputy chief mentioned, with over 75 stops in the past two and a half days, if you are lucky enough to avoid those, being one of those that weren't stopped in the last of those 75, consider yourself lucky but not immune. So, they're out there and making a concerted effort. And the point being, the serious point is, as it relates to the pedestrian safety that Councilmember Bryner raises.
Great, thank you. I'm just asking for an update on red light cameras for the Columbia Park Road Bridge.
The permits have been, have been approved. The provider that we're working with to put those cameras up has had our engineering team working the past couple of weeks, looking at the design plans to see how best to implement the cameras.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Watson?
Thank you. We'll try this. First, thanks a ton for the Police Department's increased presence in town, and also the parking zone enforcement. That has been really positive. I guess my one nit to pick is the cars, the police vehicles that are parked in the eastern parking lot at Town Hall. I think maybe you're gonna tell me that you're taking them to auction, but when are those leaving? They're occupying like seven really prime parking spaces at a heavily used building.
Yes, sir, and I lost on us. We had hoped to be able to do that auction last week, but the weather didn't cooperate, so we're hoping to have them auctioned off next week.
Councilmember Wade?
Just more of a comment. Again, I was able to attend the Chevrolet Station Apartment Community Engagement Event. It was well-attended. Just the level of impact that you all have in throughout the community, we thank you for that. Also, thank you, we had unfortunately some break-ins in Ward 1, that you all have addressed those with our neighbors. Just because you leave your keys in the car, your door unlocked, does that mean it gives someone a right to go and rummage through your car? But we do want to remind our fellow residents to do so, but thank you to Police Department for assisting with that and making sure that follow-up was done. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? With that, thank you. Mr. Berman?
Good evening again, Madam Mayor, Town Council, Town of Chevrolet. In addition to the normal operations that Public Works performs, I had a few highlights I'd like to go over. One, leaf collection has concluded last Friday. We did send around a truck Monday afternoon of this week to collect any last-minute leaf piles that we didn't get on Friday, where that popped up over the weekend, but we have officially stopped leaf collection. But I think our circle check was a good additional quality control. Our department staff has started ballfield preparation for the spring, spring season sports. We have worked directly with the Boys and Girls Club leadership. Just want to give one of my supervisors a high five with, or a shout-out, Mr. Stanford. As we were answering the Boys and Girls Club email, the response was that Mr. Stanford and the leadership had already communicated, Mr. Stanford's our lead for prepping the ballfields. He loves doing it, and he's pretty good at it, and I think we've gotten feedback over the past that we've been successful with bringing up the level of the ballfield. So, this includes not only the town park fields, which I think has had some treatment now, but we're also focused on the Boyd Park field. And so, the Boys and Girls Club are gonna be using two fields this year, within the town. They're using some other fields as well. So, I just, I really appreciate that my supervisory staff's been able to grow and to actually work directly with the community groups. As well, we have commenced spring mowing. So, we've hit, I believe, Legion Park, Town Park, and the grassy areas near Chevrolet Avenue and 202. But you will be seeing our lawn mowing operations transition from the leaf operations. Boyd Park bathrooms are being prepped, and they're scheduled to be opened this coming Monday, April 14th. We also have, it started last week, and we're gonna continue through the, we do our best to continue through the spring and end of the summer, but our pothole brigade. So, we already, last week, hit about 20 potholes, and this operation will continue. I did add two, I'm gonna add three, that aren't on my... five or a shout-out, Mr. Stanford. As we were answering the Boys and Girls Club email, the response was that Mr. Stanford and the leadership had already communicated. Mr. Stanford's our lead for prepping the ballfields. He loves doing it, and he's pretty good at it. And I think we've gotten feedback over the past that we've been successful with bringing up the level of the ballfield. So this includes not only the town park fields, which I think has had some treatment now, but we're also focused on the Boyd Park field. And so the Boys and Girls Club are going to be using two fields this year within the town. They're using some other fields as well. So I just, I really appreciate that my supervisory staff's been able to grow and to actually work directly with the community groups. As well, we have commenced spring mowing. So we've hit, I believe, Legion Park, Town Park, and the grassy areas near Chevrolet Avenue and 202. But you will be seeing our lawn mowing operations transition from the leaf operations. Boyd Park bathrooms are being prepped, and they're scheduled to be opened this coming Monday, April 14. We also have started last week, and we're going to continue through the, we do our best, continue through the spring and end of the summer, but our pothole brigade. So we already, last week, hit about 20 potholes, and this operation will continue. I did add two, I'm going to add three, that aren't on my official written report, but I heard about the food drives. Public Works was also, we were pleased to participate in those food drives. I think that's a great thing. The other thing was, is I did just send an email in between my last appearance here to the resident about the speed hump. Everyone, Councilmember Watson, Madam Mayor, you are copied on that. So hopefully I've answered that question to her. And the last thing I wanted to just touch upon again, both Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Stanford worked directly with an Eagle Scout project. There's a new chess table in Town Park. And if you get a chance, go on down and look at it. I think this was one of the more successful, they've all been successful, but I think this project turned out very well. So there's two cement stools that sit on a, that look at a really nice chess table that this Eagle Scout was able to, or Eagle Scout candidate, I guess it might be at this point, and that is set upon another concrete stone. And there's a big concrete foundation underneath it or footer that Mr. Stanford was able to create. So it was a good collaboration between us, but I really think that that is a highlight, adds something to Town Park. And I believe there's plans that once we get the Ely Building open, we'll look to see if we can't locate one down there closer. But if you get a chance, go on down. It's up above the stage, in between, sort of overlooking the stage, in between some trees. You can't miss it once you get down there. But I'm really proud of my staff and the Eagle Scout. I'm sorry, I'm forgetting his name right now. Maybe Councilmember Watson can help me out with that. But so, that concludes my report, but thank you all very much.
I don't know who went first. Councilmember Bryner? Councilmember Fry?
I have two questions. The first is to do with pedestrian safety. I've heard from a lot of folks around Cheese Park, particularly folks on that eastern edge there, where there are no sidewalks. It's a pretty wide street, and people are going super fast. There's some idea that there can't be speed humps there because there are no sidewalks, and I'm not sure whether that's a thing or not. But I also know that way back in, I want to say 2018, 2019, there was a study done that included recommendations for traffic around Cheese Park, and that wasn't acted upon. And so I guess I'm wondering whether we can look for that study, and whether we can have a discussion about traffic calming measures there. So I guess that's not a question, that's more of a statement. And then my question was, for the Ely Building, when the gentleman from Keller was here last time, I asked about the fence going up the hill, and he was not able to give an estimate of when that would be coming down. And so I wonder if anyone has an estimate since then?
I do not have an estimate since then. I am making a note of that, too. Mr. Tremble is actually leaving Keller as of tomorrow, so I will work with Mr. Short, who's the executive project manager that's overseeing this. They are aware that we want that down, but there are still utilities being laid in there. But I will ask him about that and try to have an answer to you before the next meeting, or at least a time estimate. And as to the 2018 study, I recall you bringing that up before. I don't believe we've ever successfully found that. But if we did, or another alternative, maybe actually for us to look at engaging Mr. Good. I know at some point, and I'm not trying to get into budget discussions, but it came up on the Lake Avenue, some of the feedback was like holistically looking at the entire town. But I'll hold off on that until next week.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wade?
Just one comment, and also just a little more detail, Mr. Breaman, regarding a process comment regarding the Boyd Park. Definitely thank you for your assistance with cleaning it up. I'm actually one of the coaches for my four-year-old in that field. So with the Chevy Boys and Girls Club baseball season, T-ball season coming up, appreciate you cleaning that up over there. Can you just briefly, I've had a couple residents ask about tree removal, just discuss the process on how that works, so that residents watching this can understand if a tree needs to be removed, how that would work, just briefly. I greatly appreciate it.
Well, our tree efforts are mainly focused on public trees. And public trees, I'll start with street trees. Street trees are actually regulated by the state, and so you have to have a tree license, or there's another version of it that municipalities can get called roadside tree certification. But there has to be normally some type of valid reason to remove a tree. We also do try to, what is it, do the right tree, right place. And so we're trying not to plant oaks under power lines any longer. We try to have a tree that will not interfere with the utilities as much as possible. The one tree in question that you sent in recently, I have referred to Dr. Feathers, who's our arborist. I'm not sure exactly why that's marked, but we're pending some feedback from him. We also have, though, we've been trying to take over, or not take over, but we've been trying to address the alleys. That's going to be an ongoing issue. I'll bring that up next week as well. For, as you know, for many years, possibly decades, we did not address the alleys. Long ago, there was a decision to semi-abandon them. But Dr. Feathers has been working his way through the alleys, trying to, you know, remove trees that would be hazardous or diseased or present some kind of problem, those that were not regulated by the state. And then as to private trees, we have our private tree planting program. We also can do assessments. Dr. Feathers will go out and do an assessment of a tree for $85 per request. And then lastly, we do sometimes work with code enforcement on removing a hazardous tree. When code enforcement cites it, and it's not removed within the period of time, we've been successful at embellishing, or not embellishing, but enhancing our services to code enforcement to be able to bring in our tree company and Dr. Feathers to help with that removal. And then, of course, we charge back on that.
Thank you. Just want to follow up to, I've also had a couple residents mention about the bamboo issues throughout that area, the Ward 1 area. Is there something directly that can be done regarding that as well?
We do not have an actual bamboo program. The CNPP is probably one of the foremost on evasives right now. And certainly, you know, when we collect bamboo that people have removed, we actually throw it in the trash, because you cannot, you do not put that into the leaves or the vegetation. They can be recycled. And so that's considered a regular refuse. But bamboo is, that's a very invasive and very difficult problem to deal with. We do have somebody who does have applicator or spraying license. As a homeowner, you can spray, but as a commercial entity, or municipality, as we're considered commercial, you need a license. And Mr. Benny was able to obtain that, but we have not embarked upon any kind of like widespread spraying. I will note, we're also sensitive to that the community has expressed concerns with chemicals. You may recall that the mosquito program, the state came in and indicated that they had enough people signing about chemicals that they weren't able to spray within town. So that's a balancing act, but that is something that possibly in the future, we can help out more with. We do encourage homeowners, though, to aggressively go after bamboo. And they sometimes have some means that we do not. A lot of the bamboo, though, is on private property. As we get through the alleys, there's possibility that we're going to find more bamboo in the alleyways as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fry?
Thank you, Mr. Breaman. I have a question regarding some of the WSCC work on Jason. Do we know when they're planning to be done with that?
I believe they have about a one-to-two week time period. I will say that the first trench, the first trench took them an entire week. So that's going to be an ongoing thing. I will say they are trying to be sensitive to working with the school traffic in the afternoon. And so they're working on the one trench near the school where they were earlier this week. They're also going to be, I believe, addressing the trench near the intersection with 64th Avenue. And this is not a wholesale remediation. There were some problems that we pointed out, and they're digging up those three trenches. I'm still waiting for the coring report. I understand it's been transmitted to Spennello, or waiting to be transmitted to us. I will just note that, you know, I've asked them to, you know, dig everything up and replace it and do it right. We don't have a commitment to do that at the point, but, you know, one of the things they've pushed back on me was that there will be impact to the community. I think it's more important, though, that we have sound trenches, and we don't inherit their trenches sinking years out that we need to deal with. And so there is impact with this. But hopefully Jason, in the next two weeks, will be wrapped up. They did run into some weather events, and tomorrow and this weekend is not going to help.
All right. Anyone else for Mr. Breaman? Okay. Well, with that, I will hear from council. We need to do work session items for April. Anything else we need to add? Of course, we have our separate budget meeting. Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, maybe I missed it, but item number nine, the WSCC water tower, you said there was any updates for it, or?
Chief provided the update.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it. I apologize.
They're continuing to look for funding options.
Okay. Continue to look for funding options?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Watson? Gallagher?
Hi, I just would like to, two things. We had someone from the Office of Human Rights who couldn't make it last time. I just want to make sure that that gets dealt with again. And I just had it, but I'll yield until I can think of it again.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fry?
I don't know if we need to go over it at the work session, but the Heritage Month proclamation for May. And then I'd also like to have a discussion with mayor and council, as well as Mr. Deloche and Mr. Galloway, in implementing a policy for us to, at the county, you do a secondary employment form, and that's just standard practice when you start a job, or if you, on a board or something like that. You have to get it, you have to submit it, and it gets approved by the Office of Ethics and Accountability, and a policy and guideline is put on there. That's just standard practice. I think it would be great for us to do that as well, considering that, I think that could have, that having a policy like that could just provide a level of transparency, that it feels like, I think, since it's standard practice at county level, and I think maybe some other towns probably do it as well, we should go ahead and do that. So that's something to consider. And it does include for boards unpaid as well as paid.
Yeah, no. Anyone else?
Just, I'm not sure if we can maybe bring in 202 covered, is that covered by the state, is that correct? Landover Road, so SHA. We, again, on the far west side of Chevrolet, leading to Chevrolet, had another homicide victim of someone crossing 202. So very horrific. I literally was dropping off my kids at school, and everything was backed up. And horrific lady literally was killed, impact, basically. Thank you to the officers that actually attempted to assist her with that. But we've seen several accidents. I know we brought this to our attention before, but clearly there's still a problem with our public safety on that side. I know some of that doesn't cover our regulation under the town, but bringing someone in the work session, see what we can do to better that, because I think the last year, maybe three or four homicides have occurred on Landover Road, on both ends of Chevrolet, bookends of Chevrolet. So we have done things to assist with that, but clearly it's not enough regarding that. So we can move forward with that.
Councilmember Wade? Councilmember Fry?
Councilmember Wade, just to provide a small update, and I'm sure it'd be better if we have SHA to do that as well. They are doing an accident investigation for that specific site, and then they're doing an overall 202 study, just to look at everything, including 62nd Place, neighbor lane, as well as for the pedestrian crosswalk light that was requested and approved, but they're waiting for that as well. So they're planning to do kind of like a very holistic approach over that. But one of the things that I've brought to their attention is that something needs to be done kind of immediately, especially in that area, a little bit beyond where you're at, 57th down that way, because like you said, there's been several pedestrian fatalities there. So they're aware. There's some transition in their office as well, though. So one of their engineers just moved to a different district. So, but I think it'd be good to invite him, because he hasn't been, or their office hasn't been to a work session in about three or four months.
Councilmember Watson?
I remembered that, I believe Mr. Galloway is already tracking, but Charlie Scott from Womata is coming in April, to give us a long, overly long, delayed update on the parking lot. I'll generously call the parking lot project at Chevrolet Metro Rail Station. So that's already on the, I think that's in the plan, but I just wanted to say it again, so we don't forget, because I had forgotten until I was reminded. And then secondarily, I may have forgotten what I was going to say. After, wasn't the water tower. If I think of it, I'll come back. Sorry.
All right, no worries. With that, there are no further additions to the agenda. Mayor and council announcements? Councilmember Watson?
All right, while I'm talking, maybe I'll remember about the earlier one. First, huge thanks to Mr. Breaman and Mr. Good for the work on Crest Avenue. I should say the 2800 block of Crest Avenue. This has been a great collaboration with the neighbors. And so just huge thanks, Mr. Breaman and Mr. Galloway, but also Mr. Good. Their persistence has really led to success there. Mr. Breaman's team, particularly Mr. Cardenas, was hugely instrumental, and has my eternal thanks for the chess table project at Town Park. I think he undersold it a little bit. This, by the way, was the Eagle Scout project of Stephen Albert, who is a lifelong Chevrolet resident, started off on the east side in Ward 3, and then got promoted later to Ward 1 on the west side, and is a tremendous young man. But Mr. Breaman undersold the project a little bit, because there's two chess tables. One of them cannot be installed yet because of the Ely project, the Ely Building project. But when, so as he said, go down to Town Park, take a look at, it's just west of the stage, and then you'll see- and then you'll see a twin of that chess table installed in a few months down at the Ely Building when that is open. So thank you again for that. Right now, as we speak, is the Bill Kirchner concert at the American Legion. So as you're going home, please be careful because the north end of Chevrolet Avenue will be very crowded from about 9:30 to about 11:00 tonight. And then the next 108 Music Series concert at the Legion is on May 9. The musician's name is Anson Funderberg. Try saying that three times fast. Anson Funderberg is his name, and that is going to be on May 9. So you can check out the108musicseries.com for that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Dahlke?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will remind folks again, third Monday of every month is the Ward 4 Civic Association meeting. The information is in the town newsletter. People from all over Chevrolet can attend. For actual taking votes, you have to be a Ward 4 member, but it's a very good venue for learning about what's going on, particularly, we focus on Ward 4, but it's a very good way of getting sort of FaceTime with elected officials. The mayor is there, I'm there. I know that Senator Augustine, he's often double booked, but he lets us use his Zoom. So he shows up often. It's a very good, good way to learn about sort of the public affairs in town. It's how I got involved in Chevrolet politics myself. So I recommend it highly. And it's on the third Monday of every month, virtually, at 7:00 PM. Okay. So that's number one. And second, if you have some, if you're really late, you know, trying to get your taxes done, since this is still tax time, I just want to put in another plug for the tax credits. If you are a low-income homeowner, Chevrolet does offer a tax credit. It is, it's sort of sequential. There's also a state and a county tax credit that you apply for as well. The information, I've, you know, I put the URL to the part of the town website where it discusses how to apply for this in the last town newsletter. It's also on the town website. I encourage you, if you, you know, if you think you're, if it's applicable, please consider applying. If you, this is if you haven't already. And I think that is it. I am very grateful for having served on council. I think you folks have known that I have decided not to run for reelection, but I am deeply, deeply grateful for this opportunity to serve. And it is an act of service. I've learned a lot. I've made so many connections. It is so encouraging. I don't know if you realize what it's like, just, yeah, we hear a lot of complaints, right? You know, we heard some of them tonight. But what that also reminds me is that we have an active community. We have neighbors who give a damn. And that is really, really encouraging. It shows that the people really do have power. And that's important to remember, especially in these times. And so you all restore my faith in humanity. And always keep that with you. And it makes me very, very happy to be here, and we've got an amazing team. Thank you.
I don't know who went first. Councilmember Brenner?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Gallagher. He is a true leader. He brings things to the table. He has ideas. He initiates things in a way that I find really inspiring. He's always thinking about how best to serve the whole community. And so I just wanted to express my appreciation for him, and I will miss him very much. I'm so tired, you guys. I, usually I use this time to talk about violence that is happening overseas. But the violence is happening here now. There are people being kidnapped. There are people being forcibly removed from their jobs. And I'm a woman of a certain age, so I often think about where I am directing and spending my energy, because it feels like I don't have a lot of energy right now with so much going on around us. And so I think about how I'm using my one wild and precious life, as Mary Oliver would say. And I hope I'm using it for good. And I hope I'm using it in a way that is positive and that is collaborative with my community, in a way that Ms. Joyce would be proud of, and thank you for the buttons. So I just want us all to think about where we're spending our energy and how to spend it in positive, kind ways, because we all need that right now.
Thank you. Y'all pick between, I don't know who went first. Councilmember Watson?
Oh, I just remembered. It's hard to follow that, but I just remembered the thing I was going to say. And that was, if Mr. Galloway can give us an update on the bike trail or the various bike trails, either as a discussion item or just, I feel like we haven't talked about it in a little while. Very mundane, but thank you.
First, I would like to give my congratulations and roses to Councilmember Gallagher. This is not easy. And quite frankly, a lot of people can talk about it, but to sit up here and do, I'm a freshman council member, and day one, you've been very helpful to me. I appreciate that, but this is not easy. No matter what sides you're on, at the end of the day, we are still here in the trenches trying to make Chevrolet and our surrounding communities better. So I commend you for that. Definitely has been a pleasure regarding that, the sacrifices for your family, as we all know that here, friends, family with that as well. So best of luck to you in the future regarding that. I still probably will call you and lean on you regarding stuff. So again, thank you for your service regarding that. As we know, spring break is coming up for a lot of, especially the public schools. People are traveling. We know that we have a lot of issues in the town. Thank you to the deputy chief, even mentioned the fact of calling the police department to have them check on your house if you're gone. That's if you're going, even summertime travel. So just a reminder regarding that, we do have the rewards program, rebate program for the camera, as well as other things regarding that. If you do celebrate Easter, I do, Happy Early Easter regarding that, and the CPR C Spring Festival in the town will be May 3, here at the town, that Saturday as well. All right, yield back. Oh, one other thing. My son, again, I mentioned, my son Christopher is having his first-year tournament in taekwondo right at the Sports and Learning Complex. So definitely wish him luck. And as mentioned, the boys' baseball, T-ball for the Chevrolet Boys and Girls Club will start. So come out and watch a game, support the youth, and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Frye.
So first, I want to say welcome to Lieutenant Gleason, Lieutenant Gleason. Excited to have him on the team. I want to say thank you to our police officers, chief, deputy chief, for everything you've done. You spent a lot of time in Ward 6 lately, just because there's been some activity, but there's been a lot of quick reaction to that. And I think that our residents and my neighbors are very grateful for that. They're also very grateful just for the interaction, I think, and being able to get to know some of our new officers. Well, not new, but, you know. And so just wanted to say thank you for that. Also wanted to say thank you to Public Works, especially Mr. Cardenas, for making sure that WSSC is doing what they need to be doing because they seem to not want to most times. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I know they're putting a lot of hours in, making sure that our roads and our pipes are working properly. And then, Councilmember Gallagher? You might not be up on the dais, but you are still in Chevrolet, and I know that you're going to be a very, very big part because you don't make impacts just being up here. So thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for your thoughtfulness. And I look forward to seeing how you're going to continue to advocate in our community. So, and then lastly, on what Councilmember Wade said with baseball, this year, there is a softball team, which is very exciting. They haven't had a softball team here in Chevrolet in quite some time. I believe that the mayor has agreed to do the opening pitch for the first softball game coming up. So I hope you all can attend that. Look forward to seeing that and supporting our young ladies here in Chevrolet as they pursue softball as well. That's it.
All right. If you are coming to see that first pitch, just keep in mind that I have arthritis and bursitis. Do my best. One, I want to say Happy Resurrection Day to all those who celebrate or acknowledge that, I certainly do. To our children in Chevrolet, Happy Spring Breakers. Learn something. I know you're supposed to have fun, but try to learn at least one thing on spring break, and don't drive your parents crazy. To Councilmember Gallagher, I want to thank you for serving on town council. You were first a formidable opponent against me for councilmember of Ward 4. And I want to tell you that it takes a really big person to humble themselves after losing and say, I'm going to still serve. And you did that with the Fourth Ward Civic Association. And you did that dutifully for years, until that position came open again for you to run. And that takes a whole lot. You have contributed an enormous amount, and you have made choices that aren't easy. And I thank you for that. This position, if you look in most of the language around it, whether it's mayor or council, says it is part-time, and that is unduly untrue. 24 hours a day, your council members, your mayor, are advocating for the benefit and the reputation and who we are as Chevrolet. And you have done that with great dignity. You have used all of your leave from work to show up and support. And I cannot thank you enough for what you have done for this team. And with that, I will say thank you to Mr. Bremen once again and Public Works. I believe that we've gotten a laurel issue taken care of, which has been an ongoing nightmare. I went by there and saw the nice clean pavement, so I'm very grateful for that. And hopefully, the seepage that's been going into the Dwyer home is ended, and we'll continue to look for patches to let you know, to repair. I want to say a huge thank you to our police department. I was in the gym this morning, and I saw that there was a vote somewhere in middle America to, in their police department. Council decided that they would just vote against having a police department. And I thought to myself, man, what an amazing town we are, that instead of looking at four officers and saying, maybe we should fold, that we dug in deep when found quality people, and we have a police department to be proud of. So I want to thank you all for the work that you've done for that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Unless y'all want to hang out all night long.
Do you want to do it, Joe?
Joe, I think you should do it one more time.
Thank you. Before I go, I just also want to put a plug in for the Mount Hope Commission. The Mount Hope Commission, they're looking for members to serve on the board. I believe their contact information is also in the town newsletter. If not, it's mounthopecommission.org, all one word. Thank you. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. You all have a good night.